From the great state of Texas, you are now listening to skip the noise podcast, a rounded edge media production. Thank you so much for joining us and bias. Of course, I'm referring to Rick, AKA the brown python and yours truly Benji. Blueberry sugar here for another fantastic episode. And yes, you heard me correctly. I did not mention the notorious Mexican, no. Your dam is been is absent this week. Just got some, uh, got some work stuff to handle, man. It got crazy. So, but that's how we do, man. We, we support each other. The show, the show still goes on. It must go on. And unfortunate, unfortunately, violence and senseless violence must go on.
First off, I want to point out, you know that this is the first time in what 95 shows that it's just me and you?
You're right. Cause there was, there we did there. We obviously Ben's been absent.
Yeah.
But I, but I think. Yeah, we, we covered that. Yeah, we covered that with guests. And so, yeah, I think this is the first time it's just me and you. Wow.
Yeah.
We've had every other combination. You've been have done a few. Me and Ben have done a handful.
Yeah.
Here and there.
We, you and I have never had a show ourselves. Ninety shows that we've done.
Ninety, this will be ninety six.
Ninety six. Yeah.
So cheers, cheers, good, good friend. That's amazing. You know, you know what else I was thinking too recently? Is that, and this told blow, this might actually blow the very few proud skip the noise listeners, uh, that we have, uh, attained and maintained. Cause a core group has stuck with us for a long time. So everything we do from here forth is literally, that's who I'm looking to entertain.
Yeah.
Nobody else. If anybody else wants to join, that's fine. But I'm this quality, uh, subgroup that has followed us the entire time. This is who I'm aiming at.
The OGs.
Anyway, the OGs, but what, what I'll say right now is that, uh, yeah, we, we cover each other's back, but I think it's interesting. Um, you know, you and I are taking the reins here just to add a whole new combination. You know, it's a brand new thing. Ninety, ninety six shows in.
You know, without, without Ben's input, this show should probably last about thirty minutes, probably.
I know. That's what I was thinking too. It's, it's a, yeah, it's almost an alternate reality. Yeah, the show will be very short and it'll be like he's, we, you know, we should do for fun. We should edit together a show of like, put together a compilation of like seven or eight episodes. It's just you and me talking. And it, and it's like, it ends up being like.
Twenty five minutes.
Yeah. It's like half an episode. Oh, but I just, I just, I just, uh, we love.
You know, without Ben here, we can talk about the issues that matter. So we'll start off the show by talking about how the election was really stolen. How's that?
And, oh.
And one day we'll talk about how Trump, how great Trump was for the country. And then we'll move on to, uh, you know, some notable heroes like Alex Jones and Ben Shapiro and Rush Limbaugh, of course.
Sure. It's just the ultra. This is the Rush Limbaugh three point O, uh, episode. Not really. I don't know. Like I, sometimes I, I feel like I have over the course of the show, maybe treaded a little more. I don't know. I don't even feel like I'm a centrist as much as I am. Like if you put my viewpoints on like a graph.
Yeah.
The, like the average might be in the middle.
Yeah.
But it's kind of like a dart. Somebody's a real messy darts player. It's kind of, so I guess by, by default, that would make me a centrist.
I guess.
Even though I don't feel like that.
No, I, I know what you mean. It's kind of like, um, if you are playing darts and you use your right hand to throw the dart, it's eventually going to end up right of the center sometimes.
Right.
More often than, than left of the center.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Exactly.
But, um, hey, but you know what though? On, on that note, um, I, I redpilled my brother. My brother is now leaning conservative. Can you believe that? My brother who staunch, uh, Hillary supporter. And voted for Biden, obviously. Now he's like anti Biden. He's anti liberal, um, woke agenda. He, I'm, I'm not sure what happened to him. Maybe he listens to the show, maybe he'd have conversations with me, or maybe just the fact that, you know, his kid is getting groomed in school. Set him over the edge.
Yeah. You know, is, um, does it sound like something they're doing in, in New Jersey?
Yeah, yeah. The, yeah, there is the opposite of the Florida law.
Correct. Yeah. Explain, explain what they're doing, uh, for the uninformed.
Yeah, of course. So in New Jersey, they, um, they passed a law that is quite the opposite of the, of the, um, law in Florida, which, uh, Governor Murphy, the New Jersey governor over there, uh, mandates that, um, five year olds must be given gender, gender identity classes starting at five years old.
Five.
Five. So your five year old who will be attending pre K or Kinder or even first grade, I'm not sure what, I'm not sure what the grades are, but, they will be given gender identity courses now, along with, uh, reading, writing and spelling and, and it's a, you know, I don't know. I don't know, dude. I don't know who, who agreed to this thing, you know? Um, what are the parents thinking in New Jersey at this point? I mean, are, are they writing?
Apparently they will not, I guess not, because apparently too, none of them, like the shit, uh, I want to say it went through like two years ago.
Yeah.
But it, uh, it's just like now is the deadline for the schools to, I think, correct, to implement it. So that, that's why this is making the news now. So it's actually a two year old's law, but now is like, you know, where it's crunched out, like you have to do this.
Yeah.
And I, it's one of those things where it feels like, I guess the reaction is now because that's how it was. Nobody, like you said, the parents aren't writing because they're like, they don't pay attention to shit like that. But then all of a sudden now it's about to happen. Whoa, 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 where the fuck? You know, where are you living now?
Where the fuck did that happen? Like, when did this happen? Uh, two years ago?
Right. Right. That's insane. And, and what's funny too, you, you talked about your cousin. I mean, you're not your cousin, your brother, uh, you read Bell and him.
Yeah.
It's interesting because I feel like, uh, the, the woke agenda that sort of corrupted the Democratic party has now fucked them so bad that it's like almost radicalizing people that are even somewhat center right. You know, uh, because of all this bullshit.
Yeah.
Like the, the, like culture, the culture war they're creating out of nothing. And well, I don't want to say it out of nothing. That's not really fair because it's sometimes they ride waves of, of actual issues, right? And then beat it, beat it to death. I don't know. I, I mean, I feel like there are examples of genuine beefs.
Like for example, uh, police brutality, you know?
Correct. That, that's exactly what I'm thinking.
Doesn't happen. Everybody and not all cops are bad, but they create this wave of, of outrage or, or change or reform. And they ended up, they ended up changing the whole system to the point where it's no longer functional, like defund the police.
Right. So there, there's a real issue there, but then they, there's, there's a way about artificially snowballing it.
Yeah.
To, to, to where the response is irrational as opposed to like, hey, this is a fucking issue. It really is. Let's, let's talk about what we do and the things that we build around this to, you know, to dissipate it. But no, let's, well, let's explode the flames in front of everybody's face and have everybody act irrationally. To me, that's the, the fulcrum of the entire problem, but it's hard to, I don't know. It's hard to like capture that and.
You know, here's the thing about the Florida law. I, I can't imagine. You know, I have a, a lot of gay friends that I grew up with, you know, um, high school and college and even in my, my professional life.
I know you do, buddy. So.
But I can't imagine.
I'll help you. I'll help you believe that. I'll just, I'll support you.
And knowing, and knowing the kind of people that they are, I can't imagine them agreeing to, um, teaching five year olds about gender identity, you know? I can't imagine them agreeing to, uh, not giving parental, not giving parents a consent to speak with these, uh, with the subject to their kids.
Right.
Well, you know, I mean, because they're regular people like you and I are.
Bro, in what world does this make any logical sense? Like, I don't care how goddamn woke you are, like it, any rational human being wouldn't propose this as like a way to solve any fucking thing.
It doesn't. It doesn't solve any problems. Cause there's no problem.
Like nobody, right? There is no problem. There is no problem.
Just like you said about Limbaugh, what problem is it solving?
There's none. And not only, not only that, there's no problem at five.
No, there isn't.
And.
At five, you just want to watch cartoons and, and eat cereal and candy all day. That's all you want to do.
Right. And by, and by doing this, we also, we're also in uncharted territory. So regardless of, in other words, like even in a perfect world where the genuine intent is like, oh, we want to get kids more tolerant that way. When they get older, they're not bullying these, right? Like I guess in your concocted, somebody who was proposing this would say that that's their aim, right? Even though it's like, uh, it's not, but okay. That's what you, they would say it would be. And even if that's the case, it, it's uncharted territory till we don't know. If you're implementing that, like on a public school system, like to everybody in a particular community. Man, if that fucking backfires, that could backfire fucking terribly.
It can.
Can you imagine if we already have a fucked up society where, hey, good segue here. Unfortunately, I didn't do it for, to, to be clever. It just kind of worked out that way. We already have, like with these mass shootings, we've talked about this on the show, like unfortunately, we have to about to talk about another one because they're in the subway. The N train, I guess in Brooklyn, uh, there was another mass shooting, but to hold up, to finish the point, um, we already have a mental illness crisis. I don't give a fuck. I'm calling it a fucking crisis, regardless of its, um, diagnosed or, uh, you know, try to be resolved with medicine or however they, whatever. We have a fucking problem. Like people are not in general, um, as functional as they used to be, right? Like we're relying on pills and we could get into the whole thing, but the point is
we are.
We already have a mental illness problem, right? I think every American would, would agree as, as resulted by these stuff like this, these shootings and blah, blah, blah. Uh, but so, yeah, like what, how horribly if you're sort of like putting the identities of toddlers. Well, not really toddler, young, you know.
Children.
Children, children, elementary aged children. If you're putting their identities in like some kind of imbalance, it's already going to be under assault everywhere, just by their parents influence, their shitty teachers, their good teachers, their shit, like all this other shit they have to worry about. Let's make it even more question. Let's put more questions in their fucking heads for them to fucking think about and stress out about. And their brains are going to fucking explode by the time they're ten.
Yeah.
You know, I just.
Yeah. Dude, and the thing is like, you're right. And I mean, would they even understand it? I think about, so I have, you know, my kids, right? And there are three going on four. And I think about some of the things that, okay. When I was a kid, my mom let me watch Nightmare on Elm Street. She let me watch, um, I guess the Goonies back then, you know, they had the skeleton scene or whatever. It wasn't a scary movie, but it was still not meant for kids.
Yeah.
And I don't remember ever thinking that was bad. I thought that was normal.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and with that was, but that was my upbringing.
Yeah.
You know, a lot of things that I thought that I look at now and thinking to myself, man, that's, that's either like shunned today or, or not normal. But I grew up thinking it was normal. So when, when you give kids like this, um, these classes for transgenderism and everything, they look at this at school and they're gonna go home with it and they're gonna repeat it to their parents. And it's, I don't know, dude, I'm big, think it's going to cause a rift. It may cause some sort of maybe trauma for the children, you know?
I mean, I would think.
Because what are they learning at school? And I don't know. I, it's wrong. It's wrong all around. I don't know. I, maybe I was just pressing the metal button there the whole time, but, um,
Finally, he joined.
I was pressing the middle word button. Thank you. I'm going to join you and Kamala Harris.
I know. That's awesome.
But I don't know, dude. I'm just thinking like this, this is wrong all around. Um.
Yeah, it's tough, man. It's.
Uh, you know, I'm thinking about homeschooling my kids, by the way. I really.
Are you really?
Yeah.
Which is not, nothing, nothing wrong with that. Like, uh.
I know a lot of people are doing that right now.
Yeah. Well, shoot, I actually know, I know a handful of people that, um, like adults that that's how they kick. Cause really like growing up, I didn't really know that anybody.
It was rare.
And then, yeah. So in adulthood, I've met, I've run across a handful and, um, pretty well adjusted, like, um, you know, I'm sure there's some things here and there, right? Cause it's a, it's a little, it is a little, it's a different upbringing. So I'm sure they interpret and process. You know, certain things a little different, maybe than say like the majority of people, but who's to say that's a bad thing nowadays, you know?
I mean, people think.
It might be a fucking good thing.
I think so too. And here's the thing, people say, well, you know, they need the social skills to, with other kids and this and that. And that's true. But all you're doing is bringing home the didactic instruction home and anything, any extracurricular activities are being outsourced to, you know, the soccer club or whatever it is they want to be in.
Yeah.
You know, uh, but you're bringing home the, the, the home, the, the education instruction. So I don't know. I'm, I'm thinking about doing that myself.
It's a tough call. Cause there's a benefit. I mean, mine are in the public school system. I guess, you know, for better, for worse. Uh, I mean, A, I don't think we'd have. It'd be, we wouldn't be able to, to pull it off. So I mean, it's, it's not, in other words, it never was really a thought, but, uh, but you know, I don't know. It, for parents that are willing to, because it's definitely a more of an investment.
Yeah.
You know?
It's a time investment.
It, it, yeah, it's definitely a time investment that most, uh, parents aren't willing to make. But if you're genuine about it and have right, the right intentions and do a good job, it could produce maybe a better. Boy, I mean, share, not maybe, in some cases I'm sure much better fucking result if they do, if the parents do all right.
Yeah.
Cause by and large, the public education system is not doing all right.
And it's not, it's not going the right way. I'll tell you that.
I don't think it's going the right, I don't think we're headed in the right direction. I don't think we've been headed in the right direction for fucking half a century. And now we're, we're facing the consequences.
Yeah.
I'm dead ass serious. Like I, I really feel like we are facing the consequences in 2022 of not giving an absolute half of a fuck about the education of our youth. And I think we're fucked.
Yeah. Unfortunately, I think we are too.
That's kind of bold, but like it's, I think it's true, man.
Hey, uh, what happened today?
On the, on the later.
On the other note, about mass shooters.
Yeah. Um, that was a long ass transition, but yeah, in Brooklyn today, uh, as I was speaking of earlier. Uh, a guy, um, so a few things have come out, but they still suspect is still at large. Um, I guess he fired up. Yeah. Fired thirty three shots. So here's what we know right now. Uh, uh, this happened, I believe it was this morning, this afternoon, subway, uh, this morning, um, a gunman on the train, uh, through, had a gas mask or put a gas mask on, released gas, um, and fired, I think he fired off like thirty three rounds, uh, either wounding or striking ten people, maybe more.
Ten people.
I'm sure the, yeah, maybe the numbers have sort of fluctuated throughout the day, but I think that's, that's the final numbers I heard. And, um, so yeah, he's at large. But they are, they did discover, I guess a U-Haul that's connected with the incident. There was cell phone video of the suspect and they described him to be a five foot five, which pretty fucking short, man. Uh, blackmail. Um, not much, kind of heavy set, I think. There was a U-Haul truck found that had some kind of connection with the incident. They discovered it was rented in Philadelphia by a guy, like a sixty two year old, uh, guy. I don't know. And they're at this point, they don't know if he's the gunman or if he's whatever, or if he, if it's an incident, but so far no. Obviously with these events, you speculate a lot. Is it terrorism? You know, is it, what is it? Is it somebody who's completely lost their shit? It, it, we just did at this point, I think we still don't really know if this is associated with any kind of group or it doesn't.
If the shooter is black dude, this is going to be buried by two days. They're gonna stop talking about it. If it's a black shooter, he's, they're gonna stop talking about it. I'm sure of it. Um, it'll be a local story.
Well, it's already not a local story, but.
I know, but it's gonna, I mean, you know, it's, it's not a local story now because of the shooting happened in New York City at the subway. But, uh, I don't know. I feel like if, if the shooter is black, I mean, the media is going to just turn a blind eye to it and be like, yeah, you know, well, if they find them, we'll report on it.
I know. I mean, you're not.
Page six, you know?
It's a, it's a, you know, it's a, it's a bold thing to say, but no, it's a lot of, there, there's some truth into the sentiment you're, you're putting out there and we'll see you actually, we'll see what happened. Like if it is just some guy, he doesn't have any kind of, now I think there, it's a little more nuanced than that in that if he's got some kind of ties to some sort of organization or some kind of shit like that, there's probably going to be, but if it's just sort of a one-off guy's a little kind of a nut job, yeah, it probably will kind of dissipate and, um, but yeah, if it's like, if there's any kind of sexiness attached to it, uh, and I mean that kind of ironically, but like, you know, if the guy's a Muslim extremist, right? Or if he's a white supremacist, or if he's some kind of, you know, boom, like some kind of explosive negative idea, then he's going to be, uh, it is going to be more of a fucking deal or, you know, I was going to transition it to something just because I was feeling it, but go ahead. I'm sorry. Finish the thought.
I was going to say, um, you know, so, so the way that goes is if, if you're white and you mass shoot as you're white supremacist, um, if you're black, you know, you shoot mass people, then, uh, you're, it's racism, you know, a hundred years of racism and that caused him to blow up and and if you're Arab, it's terrorist attack. Um, if you're Hispanic, I don't know. I mean, that's never, Hispanic people don't really do that. So I don't think, I don't know if there's a name for it or they would think.
I think there's probably been.
Revolutionary, probably. I don't know.
Right. Well, no, but I think like of the mass shooters, yeah, predominantly like the Looney Tunes mass shooters, white is kind of the definitely vast majority or in America, right?
It is. You're right.
And then, um, maybe black next as far as like domestic, uh, and then there's been a couple, I want to say.
I've only seen one Asian do that. Remember Virginia Tech? That was an Asian dude.
Tech, right, right.
And that dude, I don't know, man. It must've just pushed him to the limit or something.
I feel like there has been like, not many, but there has been a Hispanic or two.
There was, uh.
But it is rare. I think maybe the, yeah, I want, which one was that?
He, uh, he was an Al Qaeda guy. Jose Padilla, I think he
What?
Was going to detonate a, a dirty bomb in the city or he wanted to grab, get ahold of a dirty bomb. Never.
I guess.
See, there you go. Media never told you, huh? That's right.
Wow. Pro, man, you just smacked the gavel. There you just, you figured it out.
There we go. You've never heard of him because I did report on it. But, um, yeah, man, uh, thoughts and prayers, right? To the people in New York.
Seriously. Yeah.
Did he kill anyone or was it just shooting?
I didn't, in all the stuff I read, I didn't read of any confirmed deaths. So hope that's the case.
Dude, that's good.
If I'm wrong, uh, you know, I'm not trying to be, if I'm wrong, I hope I'm, no, I mean, I hope I'm right that there was no, um, deaths, but I, I don't know a hundred percent. Uh, I just don't remember reading any of it, but.
What do you think was the end game for this guy? Why, why release a, a gas can into the subway?
Maybe to cause confusion and.
Yeah, but you can't see your target.
No, it's true. And like, here's the other thing too, like, um, with so many people around. Um, and I promise this is going to come out like a joke, but it's not, I'm not intending to make light, um, like, man, like he, what was he really doing? In other words, this wasn't like a fucking trained somebody who's been in these type of situations, obviously, because he would have hit, you know what I mean? The damage all in all, with the, the danger of the situation and, uh, luckily, if it was just injuries, like, hey, I guess we got off pretty fucking light on that deal.
Yeah, we did.
Right? Because
Yeah.
That situat, a guy, a loose cannon with gas within a fucking, uh, what was he, what did he even have? What, what kind of gun?
He had a, he had a gas mask, had a gas canister. He had a gun.
What kind of gun? I don't remember reading that.
Me neither. I didn't, I don't remember reading about a gun either. I mean, the, the type of gun, it could have been a nine millimeter. It could have been.
Right. I don't even know if it was a pistol, a handgun, uh.
Yeah, or semi-automatic. I have no idea, dude.
I'm thinking must've been, if he was able to get on. Or wait, you know what? I'm going to sound stupid. Was it on the train or was it, it was outside?
It was on the station. No, no, no.
On the train.
On the moving train.
Okay. That's what I thought.
Yeah, it was on the moving train and he released a gas canister within this car, the, the, the subway car. And people were saying, well, how come they just didn't use the, the doors on each end to exit, you know, to the, to move on to the next train?
Fuck dude, be in that situation and, and tell me, you know what I mean? Like.
Well, the reason is, um, it was an old school train. They didn't have, uh, those exits, um, with the certain model of a train. I don't know, maybe back in the early nineties or something. I don't know how all these trains are, but they didn't have those access points. Okay. So, yeah. So the, for the asshole saying that, well, you should have just moved on to the other train. No, you couldn't because not all trains have that exit point.
Yeah, fucking idiot. This isn't a Bruce Willis movie where they run.
You get on top of the car and you like dodge the, uh.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
My God, shut the fuck up. Why, why didn't you just tackle him and fucking choke him out? Just shut the fuck up. But that's just, shut the fuck up. There's always that guy, right? But, um, but anyway, I guess my, my bigger point was like that it wouldn't seem to me to be like ex-military, because unfortunately too, that's the other fucked up part is like, a lot of these guys have military backgrounds. Um, you know what I mean? Kind of tying back to the mental health shit, but not to make a bigger topic out of it, but some of them, you know what I mean? That they'll find, like have like some military training and shit. That this doesn't appear to be the, I don't know. We don't know much about this guy. So we don't even know if the guy that rented the U-Haul is the guy or if he's maybe.
Grandpa or neighbor.
Or yeah, exactly. So anyway, we don't know much at this point, but just wanted to, like I said, bring it up because it's, uh, obviously the, the biggest story of the day. Well, the NYPD. Very tragic and very sad.
Just to let you guys know that NYPD released a person of interest, a photo of a person of interest. So they're not calling them a suspect, but that's a person of interest. And this is a middle aged black man who probably got pretty upset with his job or something. I don't know. That's probably what I'm thinking.
Yeah, it could be. Just, just.
You know? Yeah.
Went postal. Yeah, that's what this seems like is somebody just kind of going postal.
Yeah. Did you ever play that game?
Uh, the game?
Postal? Yeah. The game postal?
No, I'm not familiar.
No, dude. That was a fucking awesome game. It was like, uh, back in the late nineties, I think. It was a computer game.
Okay. I was about to ask, like, I'm going to sound like a complete dumbass because I don't even know what kind of game it even is.
It was a computer game. And basically you were this dude in red and you were just indiscriminately shooting people and you had a bird's eye view.
Oh, okay. That sounds fucking totally productive. It's art. It's art. That's good.
It's art. It's art. You know, and my parents were like, again, again, my parents were totally okay with me playing this game. I bought it off eBay for like five bucks. I installed it on my computer and I was playing, uh, postal. And I'm okay, dude. I didn't shoot anybody, you know? I mean.
What do you mean? You didn't shoot anybody? Like that's the point of it. That sounds like that's the point of the game.
Yeah, no, I didn't shoot anybody alive. I mean, I was an influence. I knew that this was, you know, reality. This was a fantasy. But I was able to play a game called postal indiscriminately shooting civilians, severe people. And yes, the cops too, because at some point in the game, you know, the cops try to stop you.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, you have armor and everything. It's pretty badass. It was a pretty awesome game.
He, you know, it's funny. It's like, I, I never, not to derail this, but I never like that. I don't know. My video game history is really, really weird because I played as a kid. So my attachment is to like, you know, arcade and like older shit. And then I skipped like a whole, like my parents are divorced. So my, at my dad's house, I had a Genesis at one point when I was like a kid. So then at some point though, I just moved, I just took it back. I lived with my mom. I just took it back to my mom's house, but it was already kind of like a little outdated. But I just had it and I never upgraded. Like people were getting like PS one and all that shit. I just never, dude, I just kept my Genesis and I didn't play that much, but like, I just played that.
Exactly.
Until I move, yeah, until I moved out of the fucking house. So I never really like mentally graduated into like that era of, of, of games. So like when I first, people would ask me to play Madden and shit with, you know, and this is now like early two thousands with like all the fucking buttons and the trigger. I was like, what the fuck is going on? So anyway, like I didn't, uh, that's a long way of saying like what you're talking about, like I didn't play a lot of those. What you're talking about, like, I didn't play a lot of those games, like the first version, like GTA shit like that.
Yeah.
But one day, so we had, I had like an old PS three. And this guy at work told me, this is like way later, this is uh, this guy at work told me like, oh, you gotta play. Blah blah. He's talking about all these games. I was like, I never really played. Blah blah blah. And then he, he brought up GT, one of the GTAs, the Liberty City. I think, and he, oh, you gotta play it, man. You gotta play it. And like, for whatever reason, like he hyped me up and I was like, ah, or he, I had that conversation in my head. And then I was at some place and they were, they had like used uh, games. And I wasn't even like gonna buy anything. And I, I saw that and I was like, it, it was like three dollars or something. So I said, ah, you know what? Like, just for the fucking goof. Let me pick this up cuz he was talking so much, talking this shit up. So I, I played for like, I gave it a good twenty minutes or whatever. But in that twenty minutes, now mind you, I've never played, I'm not used to these like type of games. And so there's a scene where I'm supposed to draw, I'm supposed to find something from fucking somebody, but I end up. Going, taking a wrong turn and I'm like under a freeway uh, underpass and I'm like, I can't even really control real well the car driving.
Yeah. Not even the commercials.
No, and there was like a hooker and a homeless guy like standing right next to this big ass freeway like pillar. Cuz I'm like underneath the Alver Pass and I didn't intend to, but I just, I don't know, I'm sorry, the hooker was in the car. That's what it was. Like I had. Like I picked up a hooker in the game and then was trying to figure out how to get out of the little intersection. And it was like under a freeway path, so there's this wall and this like homeless guy standing there trying to light a cigarette. And I back up the, the car and just fucking impale him and smash him up against his wall. But I didn't mean to. I just did it on accident.
Feel bad about it.
He exploded in blood and the fucking hooker in the passenger seat was like, ah, like she starts screaming. Dude, I dropped the controller and almost pissed my pants. I was laughing so fucking hard. Cuz I had no idea that that was even like. And I was like just curled up in a ball laughing so fucking hard. Anyway. So yeah, fucking video games are.
Well, you know who's playing a lot of, a lot of.
You know what? You never did that. You never did that, but.
I never did that.
That was my whole point.
No, dude, I get it. I get it. Um. I, I, I mean, I'm, I'm part of the generation that played Wolfenstein and Doom.
Yes.
And Postal on the computer.
Yeah.
And then I ma- I migrated to Xbox three sixty playing the Halo series and then that's it, I stopped.
Yeah, well, I mean, here's to say, like, all my friends did too. I was just the weird one who. Like I was still playing goddamn Sonic two and fuck, like I don't even know when that came out. I know it was and I just played that cuz she decided it was too.
Fucking Sonic and Telltale, man.
Yeah, I just didn't like, I didn't like parting with my money. I still don't. And so to me, it was like, hey, I'm still having fun playing fucking Sonic two.
Yeah.
And I'm, you know what I mean? About to graduate high school, like I'll just keep playing that and that's fine. Like I had like four games. That I just kept playing the entire.
That's fucking cool, dude.
My, my only other shit I played was like, if I went to somebody's house and they wanted to play like NBA, whatever.
Yeah.
Or Madden or some shit. Like, other than that, like I didn't play shit.
Dude, my uh, my little nephews, you know, they're teenagers now and they got all the Xbox shit that's going on right now or the PS whatever, ten.
Yeah.
Um, and I can't, I can never get a straight answer from them. Yeah, exactly. I, I can never get a straight answer from them as to how the fuck do you put the game inside this goddamn console? Is it a CD or do you download it from the internet? And if you download it from the internet, is this a subscription? Do you get to keep the game? How, how does this work? I don't know.
It's a whole different.
I can never get a straight answer. All I know is that they're playing something different every time I go to their house. And I know they got that many games. No, I don't know, dude. It's so weird.
Yeah, I think it's like an access uh.
So you pay for the console and then you pay for like the membership? Is that how that works now?
Yeah.
Or do you buy like a, a CD?
Play online.
Do you get a GameStop anymore and buy games?
I think you can, but like I, I think most of it's digital.
That's so weird, isn't it?
At this point, I think still obviously sell the hard copies, but.
Like I'm still trying to put a cartridge or a CD in this machine and now you're talking about like.
You're blowing on the fucking cartridge, the. I know.
Okay, Zelda's gonna work now. Zelda's gonna work now.
Yeah, exactly. It's like, god damn it, there's a line through the middle of the fucking screen. I gotta take it out and reset it, blow it one more time. Shit, hard times, man. Or you spit on it too much and now you fucked it up cuz you blew on it too much and like your spit got in there.
Or you buy like the, the Nintendo. You buy the, the official Nintendo cleaner and all it is is like a little cotton pad with some alcohol and that costs you like thirty bucks.
Oh, you could have easily just made, yeah, you could have done that. It's a, it's a DUI project. You don't need a product for that. For sure.
But you know who's playing a lot of video games right now?
Who?
Uh, the people like Shanghai cuz they're not allowed to leave their homes right now. Apparently. They're still doing lockdowns in China.
It's so bad. Like the reason we bring this up. So. Yeah. Oh, wow. Okay. So we thought like in our heads, like we're so done with that shit. Um. And for the most part, I mean, I've been talking to a doctor recently who's like. Yeah, you know, blah, 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 whenever completely out of the woods, but for the most part. You know, herd immunity and now, like I said, it's a doctor. I'm just saying what he said. I'm not, I'm not endorsing one way or the other or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, right, sure.
He just said, but he's just like, yeah, I think at this point, um, I think we actually do have, you know, somewhat of an immunity buildup. So. It's like, yeah, we'll get waves. It'll be like the flu, blah, blah, blah. But in Shanghai. Um. They have gone completely, like this ain't your mama's lockdown. Like this is. The shit, like this is the shit we were scared of, like the science fiction projections. So anyway, I've heard stories. There are some accounts we read. I think there's an article you sent. Um, it was somebody who's actually in there, a resident of Shanghai where it's the worst. There's other cities, I think, like Tianjin's locked down, but like Shanghai, I think is like the most extreme. So they can't leave their house like whatsoever. There's dudes in hazmat suits. Um, you have to come out, the only time you can come outside is to get COVID tested. Yeah. So they'll come out, they'll march outside, get COVID tested in whatever kind of order, uh, and then they're sitting there. This person that's, that's telling this account is like. You know, they're just sitting there terrified cuz it's like, oh, I love being outside, but it's like, fuck, if I test positive, then I'm fucked. Cuz then they're gonna go to this. Like shithole of a quarantine center that doesn't have running water. Yeah, you heard that correctly. Uh. So yeah, it's like, god damn, like, do I stay in my, my fucking already probably tiny dwelling? Like I've seen shit from Hong Kong and I know it's, I know it's different, but like I'm not imagining a real suitable scenario in the, for the residents of fucking Shanghai, which is like twenty-five million people. Big city, you know, and they like to live in a little cramped. So anyway, and what I'm saying is it's not a comfortable existence if you got locked in your house, but if you come outside. Uh, if you test positive, so yeah, you have two options. You can test positive and come to a worse fucking place. And be sick with fucking COVID. Oh, and you might die too. Depending on your health situation or just, or disappear. Seriously, that's the reality too. Or you go back to your existence where you're in your apartment and okay, maybe you're COVID free, um, but how do you get food? Oh, the only way to get food, guess what? Is to order it. And now you have to depend on a. Goddamn food delivery system that's state-run probably, um, who doesn't have your best, who doesn't have your best interests in mind, uh.
For twenty-five million people.
Yeah. And so they're overwhelmed and they can't get everybody fucking food. So people are ordering from like seventy different places at a time. Just trying to like a fucking roulette wheel, like maybe one of them will show up. And I'll actually get to eat to survive.
That's messed up.
And some people have restrictive diets. So uh, what they're doing.
Like vegetarian?
Dude, either that or like maybe legit health problems where it's like, oh, I need. No, not even that. I'm just talking about like, I, I'm allergic to whatever, you know?
Yeah, I'm allergic to peanuts. Well, we got us peanuts, man.
That's all we got. So here you go. No, for dead serious, like that's the shit that's happening. It's like, oh. Uh, oh, you're allergic to eggs? Well, there's eggs and there's carrots, so I hope you like carrots. And like, that's what they're getting. Like they're just sending them what, what the fuck ever. It's not like, oh, I want French toast. No, asshole, you're getting corn. Or you're getting fucking, you're getting like one thing, dude. And like, they're fucking, they're dying, dude. Like people are dying of starvation and freaking out and protesting, uh, because it's, this is so bad. This is like the worst. This is what like a dude freaking out conspiracy theorist envisioned in his head, like when twenty twenty first happened. Is literally what's going on in Shanghai right now.
And so the weird part is that, um, so I've seen videos of this, of what's happening over there. So these guys in white suits have been given any authority, any all authority to enforce this lockdown by whatever means necessary. Whether it's by uh, you know, by grabbing a person and, and showing them into their house, uh, or beating the shit out of them. Which has happened.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, and I've seen a lot of videos of people, women, basically women trying to fight back and these guys in the white suits beat the shit out of them. With no remorse.
Dude.
Oh, and I found one satisfying video of one guy. Who managed to get a hold of one of these white guys in white suits and like knock the shit out of them and take off his mask, took off everything.
Oh.
And his wife had to stop him, but he had him on the floor and he was just pounding on him.
Oh.
You know, uh, and it was weird cuz nobody was coming to help the dude in the white suit.
Oh, yeah, of course not.
But uh, it's getting bad, dude. It's getting savage. Now, what I'm thinking is you have a, a city of twenty-five million people. Versus uh, you know, an army of about thirty thousand, maybe.
Yeah.
And they're not even armed. Why not? Get out, you know, organize something, scream something from the protest, get out of there.
No, at some point, yeah, they're gonna light the fucking city on fire.
Yeah, I mean, you know, if you're, if you're the person and you're, you're starving and you got no hope for your life. Fucking go out there, risk of getting a bullet in the head and watch, see everyone, have everybody else watch you happen, watch it happen.
No, dead serious. Like the best way to start a revolution, starve the people. They have to eat.
Yeah.
They're gonna get fed. They, they're, that overrides everything. So eventually they're just be like, no, I'd rather eat than die. So you're in my way. And that's what's gonna happen. Um, so it's not a good uh, outlook. The other thing, the little guy kind of gruesome, you were talking about like the guys in the white suits. The hazmat uh, guys beating the shit out of everybody, um, not that, but like, so the, imagine the scenario I, I kind of painted it earlier where the guy's. Waiting on his food or her, whoever. Waiting on their food or, or they gotta go get their COVID test and like, okay, you're um, you're positive, you gotta go to the quarantine center. Oh, well, what about my dog? Oh, 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 I'm sorry. So fuck your dog. They hit him with a shovel and fucking kill him. Like, that's what's going on.
So the story behind that was this, that they, the guy tested for COVID. And they immediately took him to the quarantine center. They're walking him over there. Didn't give him time to get a shit or, or, you know, have someone take care of his dog or anything. So his dog was following him. The dog was following him to the, to the center and the guy didn't, the guy in the white suit didn't like that. He needed the dog, dog to go back. So. What does he do? He beats the dog with a stick. Dude, he beat the dog to death with a stick. What the fuck, man? Like, what kind of person are you? You're supposed to be a health coworker, I guess? I don't know. I'm not sure if these are police, military or health coworkers doing this.
Dead serious. Like what the fuck agency? Fuck is this? Do you, like, do you remember? So what's funny is like when. Yeah, there's this weird, whenever the, it's like martial law and shit. I, I, it's like guy, people that work at the tax office are like, got rifles and gas masks and shit. You know what I mean? It's like. It, at that point, it's just like the government versus, do you remember like the riots in like Portland and shit? And like you'll send in these like uh, federal troops. It's like, okay, they're federal. It's like some of them are like border patrol. Like fucking coast guard, like I don't know, like they're just giving everybody fucking guns, like. Go, like all these cool, fucking um, gray area agencies that are now militarized. And uh, yeah, so what are these hazmat suit guys? They aren't, like you said, obviously if they're like. Have got such a, a burning desire to beat the fuck out of everybody, like they're not, they're not cleric, you know, like clerical workers. Um, it's weird.
No, they're not. I don't know what they are.
This is so fucked up and, and especially like.
And you know that.
I don't know. It just seems weird, dude. No, I just think like COVID at this point has absolutely fucking nothing to do with what's going on over there.
No, no, I don't think so either. And I was gonna get to that, that the variant that they're talking about isn't even, is, it's less. Harmful or less lethal than the previous Omicron variant. So we're still sticking with Omicron. Okay? Um. Because we don't wanna call it uh, the Chi variant because that's, you know, Xi Jinping or whatever. So they're gonna stick with Omicron. Um. And it's called the Omicron BA two variant. And it's, it's far more virulent. It spreads a whole lot quicker than the previous Omicron variant, but it's. You know, like the laws of uh, of, of viruses go is that the more virulent it is. Uh, the less, the more transmissible it is, the less lethal it is.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's not worth for a virus to kill its host uh, and spread so quickly because then it'll die off. So if anything, this is a watered down of the Omicron variant. And they locked down the city for this?
Yeah.
So it's not about COVID anymore. I don't know what this shit is about. I'm not sure why the Chinese government is punishing. One of the major city centers of their country is Shanghai, which is a major financial center.
Oh, it's like the finance, is it not?
The financial center.
I feel like it is. Yeah, it's like of, of mainland China for sure.
And the thing is, is that, you know, with any, with any major metropolitan city, be it uh, New York, Tokyo, Shanghai, Beijing. Is the living quarters uh, are sold to people and the, the living quarters people live are small because you have the entire city. To enjoy. That is your backyard. You know, people do not stick around in their apartment complexes. They go to the parks, they go out to the clubs, they go to the night scene. They, they only go back there to sleep. Uh, so you're confining these people to these small little apartments for what is it, three weeks now?
Yeah.
Um, and the only thing you have to offer them is a drone telling them to. You know, soothe their soul's desire for freedom. Bitch, fuck you. I need food.
Oh, no, and think about like in our culture, right? The, that's a good point you bring up cuz like, yeah, you, you, that lifestyle, it isn't meant like we, we're in shock when we see these Hong Kong apartments. Um, which it is, it's shocking, it's tiny. Um, but to your point, yes, the, the idea is that. In other words, the reason that's even livable for people is cuz. They just go sleep there, you know? They may have a few amenities, you know, for fifteen minute downtimes when they're not, whatever. So. They can, they can tolerate it cuz it's like, yeah, the rest of the day, they're out doing whatever. Um, but imagine, so when we were locked down, right? Um, I mean, yeah. For the, let's say your average American. Uh, who's like a homeowner, right? You know, we've got a house and a yard, like, you know, at the end of the day, if we can get food, we still have power. It's not that bad. But what if they, what if, what if you're in like a fucking? Fucking ten by twelve. You, you're now in solitary confinement. Like you just put your entire fucking community in solitary.
Yeah.
What the fuck is gonna, like, that's not a good look. I don't care how bad this fucking, if this disease is making people explode. Spontaneously in the middle of the street, fuck it, man. That's better than, than confining twenty-five million people to solitary confinement, dude. I think it's better that just random people are exploding on the street.
Yeah, you know, you're right. And I, I don't know, man. I mean, even if Omicron BA two, you know, when it, when it becomes an epidemic here in America. Um, I really don't think we're gonna see those level of lockdowns that we saw, that we see in Shanghai.
I think it will do it. Nobody's gonna do it.
They won't. No one's gonna do it and we'll rebel here, man.
Though, yeah, they're not gonna do it, man. They have guns. They're not gonna do it.
Yeah. So anyway, that's, that's.
But yeah, let's neither here. Well, I tell you what, let's say, should we take it? That's a good stopping point. Let's take, let's take a little break. Uh, and we'll come back on the other side for a little party in the back. So take a piss, do whatever you need to do. See you in a, see you in a brief moment. And we're back, partying in the back underway. And uh, to kick things off, Rich, we talk about the uh, the L's that are. El Presidente is uh, been taking on the fucking, on the fucking regular, um.
Man.
Yeah, you were, you were pretty forthcoming with these uh, shenanigans videos that you were sending us this week. Uh, what do you got, man? What was your favorite?
Oh, well, we got, we got two videos of Biden um, popping up on the internet and I highly recommend them as if you wanna go to laugh and feel depressed at the same time. Feel depressed at the same time. And, and maybe even question. Uh, this is something I always try to question, uh, Ben about, uh, anyway. What made him, what made him think Biden was a good leader, dude? I don't get it. I still don't.
I don't know that he ever did he? To be fair to Ben, I don't know that he did.
I don't know, like anyone who voted for Biden, like seriously, I know that the options weren't great. You had Trump, you had Biden, but. Brother, you gotta pick one that's better over the other. You know?
I mean, I'm, I'm more appalled at the Democratic Party for letting that be their candidate, honestly, like. More than the American people voting him in office, I'm more disgusted by the fucking fact that that's like. That's what they produced, dude.
Well, not only that, you would think like, okay, you'd produce a horrible candidate, but you know what? Maybe the backup shouldn't be so bad. But the backup is just as bad as he is. And, and she doesn't have an excuse because at least Biden is like eighty something years old. And I get that, maybe, you know, grandpa's forgetting his words and shit, but what's? What's, uh, Kamala Harris's excuse? I mean, the only thing I come up with. Is that she's a product of the public school system. That's it. That's all I got.
No doubt. Back to my earlier point, ding ding. Thank you for the full circle attachment there, but, but with Biden. Or, or even, yeah, with Kamala, it's just like, okay, maybe like city council. Like I think she'd be dope, like city council dude, and that's it. Like I think that's where her talent level is.
Well, maybe, maybe like animal control, probably.
Right, like the. The fucking board of directors for the animal abuse, okay? Of the city. Public works.
Yeah.
Dude, yeah, that's about, that's, that's where Max. Max ability level.
The only pattern that I've seen, um, in the Democrat ticket since Obama is that. The president seems to pick someone who is of lesser caliber than they are. Obama picked Biden. And then you pick, you get Biden as president, you think, ah, he can't pick anyone lower than that. He gets fucking Kamala Harris.
Yeah, it's almost like, hey, you better not kill me. Like, that's their little, that's like.
Exactly, dude.
Yes, their little fucking like.
You better not off me because then this person becomes, uh, the president.
It's the guy in the shitty eighties action movie who's like trying to take over a grocery store and he takes like a six year old girl hostage. Like, don't fucking do it, man. Like that's, that's how they pick my president. Don't fucking try this shit. That's gonna be your fucking president. That's how, that's the mentality, dude, and it's fucking, we'll talk about though, what happened.
All right, all right. So the, the first video that we talked, started off with.
We couldn't help ourselves. We just had to indulge.
Um, seems to be ragging on the tobacco industry. And, um, he, he pretty much, I'm not sure what the fuck he's talking about with the tobacco industry, but he says. Uh, that these are the only people, or can you imagine a world where the tobacco industry couldn't sue prostitutes? Come on, man. Um, so the, so he's imagining a world in his head where the tobacco industry couldn't sue prostitutes. And I don't know why no one's questioned, uh, Jen Psaki about this. Like, what did the president need when? He said the tobacco industry couldn't sue prostitutes. Is that a world that he wants to live in?
Let's really talk about the foundation of this beef with the fucking, that the tobacco industry has at the. Sex industry, dude, like what? Um, yeah, they're really.
I guess he's gonna propose a law where, you know, tobacco industry can sue prostitutes? I don't know.
I hope they do, for God's sake, for all that is American.
That is very true. I mean.
I really hope, yeah.
There is a ton of false advertising that happens with those, those things, but that's for another story.
That's, that's right. That's for another, another time.
And then the second thing is. Um, you know, Ben was a big proponent of this, uh, we, you know, we've been, we, we cut back on, on drilling here in America. We cut back on the exports of oil. Uh, we let Russia and Saudi Arabia and others handle that work for us. And so now we're dependent on energy for them. Uh, and Ben was actually a proponent about this. He was like, well, you know, at least we don't do fracking. Cause fracking is so bad for the environment. Um, and we don't, uh, you know, by, by stopping the oil exports and we preserve our environment for future generations. And I was thinking, man, that's, that's very admirable, like that. But now, uh, Biden is proposing, uh, adding ethanol to our current petroleum supply. Uh, in order to save on gasoline that way, it's gonna bring our gasoline down by a penny and it's gonna pollute the air more. What it currently is now. So the EPA is now lowering its standards for clean air so that we can accommodate this new ethanol. Uh, that's gonna be put into our gas. So now we're gonna have dirtier air.
Um, that's very heartening when the, it just low, like, yeah, let's.
Yeah, he's like.
It's like, that's depressing, oh.
But, but no more on this is that, you know, the whole point of these environmentalists or people who voted for Biden, who support him to cutting back on oil production. Was that we're supposed to preserve the environment, but for some fucking reason, it's okay to pollute the air with ethanol? You know? I, I, where's the logic in this? I don't get it.
Right, well, what's funny too, because you remember when there was the big shift or not shift, but. Um, alternative fuels were kind of the big rage, kind of before the EV, the electric vehicle movement. Um, I don't know, like what, early two thousands ish, um, something like that?
Probably mid two thousands, yeah, where we had the ethanol buttons pop up in our gas stations, yeah.
Correct, right. And so that was a big push because it's like, you know, yeah, it's more consistent, blah, blah, blah. It's made out of corn, right? It's like one of those like hippie french fry fucking bands or whatever, like that's what you think in your head.
Oh, yeah. Oh, dude, he's gonna, by the way, I'm sorry, he's gonna implement this during a, uh, upcoming food shortage, by the way.
No, no shit, right?
But that's another story.
Like instead of. Don't worry, we don't have to fucking buy oil from Saudi Arabia.
We'll just use our oil.
Fucking food.
We used your fucking corn, uh, to make oil, to make gas, but didn't he just say there was gonna be a food shortage coming up pretty soon?
You know that shit that makes everything you eat?
Yeah, well, you don't need to do tortillas, so fuck you, man. We're gonna make oil.
Oh, fuck. Yeah, that's, that's hilarious. Oh, wow.
So now, totally, they're gonna use our food supply, um, to, to make this, to make this new gasoline. But now they're gonna use our food supply to dirty up our air. When all we have to do is fucking drill.
Right, man.
All we have to do is make, just drill from the fucking ground, bring it up to the surface and then make petroleum. And that's it. That's what has been done for years. But this moron wants to finish off whatever food supply we have to make this new ethanol to make our dirt, our, our air more dirtier. I don't get it.
It's money, dude, because like.
Is it money or is it, what is it?
I don't know, because I feel like. I don't know, I get that petroleum like runs the world and it really is, like it's such a hard system to break from. That's why it's such a sur- unsurmountable task, you know, to really convert to like clean energy. Cause there's so much money involved. And it's not even to say that's like, oh, they're evil, but it like really would propose a problem to, to make that shift, right? A lot of things have to change for that to even work. So it has to be done very fucking gradually. So gradually that I don't think anybody really has the patience or that we're ever gonna make any kind of difference to reverse. Whatever, however bad we're corrupting our fucking environment. I just think that, that formula doesn't work out. You know what I mean? I don't think that we can reverse, uh, the economic system of the entire fucking world. In a quicker amount of time than it would take to reverse the effects, you know what I mean? To convert to like, it, it just, it's not gonna work. Um, we're already like six touchdowns behind in the third quarter.
It's not gonna happen unless you.
Sorry, I'm sorry to be like the bummer. Sorry to be the bummer, but yeah, unless you got, you got a real rah rah speech at fucking halftime, it ain't happening. Um. You know, so, but yeah, if he was gonna go clean, just fucking throw your dick on the table and like. You know, like, you really had, would have to push the fucking go button and go to like ludicrous speed. And like I said before in a, uh, earlier episode, if you were gonna, like, this might be the time, right? But it's not, it's not gonna be, um. So, yeah, man, nothing's gonna, I don't know, the, the, I think the resistance to it is that, is that even though. Like they've overpromised something that they knew was never gonna happen. And now they could actually make it happen. It's like, ew, we don't really wanna make it happen.
Yeah.
You know?
No, yeah, of course, of course. And they don't wanna make it happen. I, I guess what. What isn't happening is, you know, I was talking to Ben about this, is that oil, the oil market is speculative, okay? It doesn't matter how much oil you have today, it's how much oil you're gonna have in the future that, that drives the prices. Okay, that's why they call it futures. Um, so even if Saudi Arabia. Even, even if America started drilling shit ton of oil today, you wouldn't see the, the gas prices fall until maybe, I don't know. Three, four months from now, because it's all about the future, okay? One reason that the gas prices went up after the, um, the pipeline, the Keystone Pipeline, even though the Keystone Pipeline was not functional. And that is true. Biden was right about that. It was not functional. It wasn't producing any oil. But the fact that it would have brought in oil in the future kept the prices low for us in the present. Okay, so, yeah, I mean, his, you know, Jen Psaki is coming out saying, well, you know, the Houston apparently wasn't functional. Didn't produce one, it didn't bring in one ounce of oil to the Ameri- to America. True, but it was going to. A lot of oil, it was gonna bring a lot of oil to America and it was gonna, it, that's what cut the prices down was a promise of more oil in the future. Well, you stopped that. And then you, you, you banned the Russian imports and then Russia raised Ukraine. And then you have a higher, uh, you know, the COVID lockdowns are ending across the world, so people are using more oil. That's gonna drive the prices up because of supply of oil is going to remain the same, but the demand's gonna increase. And that's what, that's why you have high oil prices. I mean, that's why it's not gonna, as long as America doesn't produce more oil and, and introduce more onto the market. You're gonna see prices increase because demand will keep increasing and Saudi Arabia is not gonna drill, is not gonna pump out more gallons. They hate, they hate America. Have you seen that video that they put out?
I know, but.
Okay. All right, so, um. You, you have comedians here in America, like the late night talk shows who kind of resist making fun of Biden for whatever reason. They ragged on Trump for forty fucking years. Every night you had to hear some sort of Trump skit.
Right.
Uh, you don't really hear too much from Biden from that, uh, too much of Biden from these late night talks, but Saudi Arabia has gotten into the, to the game.
They don't have any fucking interest in protecting Biden's feelings.
Saudi Arabia is a state-run, uh, television network, okay? They have state-run television network. Nothing airs on the air unless you have the Saudi prince's blessing. So they started airing skits of Biden. They're making fun of him. Um, in the worst possible ways, man, they're, they're, they're really ragging on this guy and it's actually a pretty funny comedy. But that is unheard of, uh, for a country like Saudi Arabia to be making fun of the American president. It has never happened before. Didn't happen with Trump, didn't happen with Bush, didn't happen with Obama or Clinton. This is the first time that they've gone to the fore of comedy, making fun of Biden. That's how much respect he had, they have for him. That's after they didn't pick up his phone call. But, uh.
That was fucking.
So they, they, they're sending a really clear signal that they have absolutely no intention of listening to America. Um, or listening to Biden. And, uh, and, and they know it. And the problem, the, the setting part is we have the ability to start producing so much oil that we can export it, but we don't. And our prices are just gonna go up as long as we have this president. Anyway, I'll throw it back to you. I don't, I'm, you know, how it is.
No, it's, uh, well, just, just talk about him getting shit on by a bird.
The bird, man.
Just, just to put a period on the statement.
So if it wasn't enough to be making, to be made fun of by the Saudis, uh, as he's making this speech about adding more corn to our ethanol. And then muddying up our air, uh, a bird shit on him, rightly so. Cause a bird's probably listening to this and thinking, fuck, man, like my air is gonna get dirtier. I can't fly freely. Let me shut on this dude. Um, and no, and that's an actual, that's an actual account. It did happen today, um, where he was giving a speech. And right in the middle of it, a, a white mark just ends up in his lapel on his, on his suit and a bird shit on him today. So if you want to YouTube it.
Little piece of shit. He got a.
Yep.
He got literally.
It didn't hit anybody, dude. It couldn't hit, it couldn't hit the side of the podium. It could have hit the front of the podium, an audience member, but it hit Biden's, like. Spot on.
Yeah.
Spot fucking on, dude, like, that's aiming right there.
Oh, yeah, that was, um. Fucking dead on accuracy at the, you know, perfect timing as well. But, you know, speaking of getting shit on, you know who else got shit on recently? The fucking H, H I S D school board.
Oh, shit.
The Houston, Houston Independent School District, so.
We're taking it local.
We're taking it very local to, uh, wrap up the program. Um, this is, this is a weird topic and it's gonna go in all kinds of interesting directions. Cause we recently, Rick sent over a, uh, in the, in the infamous text thread, uh, Gary Wayne Monroe. He's, uh, he's running for state representative, House District one thirty-one, right here in the great, uh, Harris County, greater Houston area. Uh, well, so he recently, you know, at school board meetings, right? They're open to the public. And they always give, uh, there's a portion of the meeting where the public can come up and they can get, uh, depending on the district, right? There's a certain amount of time that you can just, you know, stay here, uh, you've got a, you know, a minute and a half or whatever it may be, two minutes to talk. Uh, what, what, uh, we witnessed was, uh, Mr. Gary Monroe, uh. I don't even know where to begin. So first of all, he goes up, he's got on, um. He's a larger man, African-American fellow, uh, middle-aged, uh, wearing a little heavy set. You know, so he, he fills out this sort of superhero slash pro wrestling attire. It's, uh, it's black and, and yellow. He's got a yellow mat, like a, kinda like Robin from Batman.
A yellow.
Uh, yeah, yeah, he's got a yellow cape, um, black shirt that says, uh, it's got some kind of.
Five star general.
Five star general, okay. So he looks like a shitty wrestling character from like your local pro wrestling, you know, that, that plays at the, or. Those shows at the, the veteran of foreign wars hall, like that's what he's dressed like. He gets up and he starts going in, you know, I'm just gonna, I'm dead, I'm serious, I'm gonna play a little bit audio, because this is public shit. I can play this. Uh, hold on. Just, just listen, listen to a sample of this. So you can, you can understand what I'm talking about.
Name is Five Star. This week, in the last three weeks, Five Star is eliminated. About six to seven of your personnel. I come to fight the forces of evil. Because your deputy superintendent is undermining you. He's reporting directly to former trustee Deanna Davila. And the former superintendent Terry Green. I will expose him to the highest degree. You have a trustee sitting on his board who's getting kickbacks from after school programs right now.
Wow.
There's the federal soup about to drop in about two weeks. I ain't been wrong all the, be somewhere in January. Somebody going to jail again. You got a house full of rats, you got a house full of snakes. And I'm gonna help you get rid of all of them. So if your friend. Works for a company or owns a company and he working for this district, I'm exposing you. So go tell Rockland Harris County, so this guy got so many different uniforms. That I'm finna mess this whole game. Watch who you hang around, Mr. Superintendent, because he's undermining you. He looks like a homegrown when the new negro in town is thrown out. Don't be mad, young man. Just know I don't never lie. Game over. I'm exposed every last one. Somebody up here going to jail in about two weeks, man.
Okay, so, so. I don't give a fuck. In the history of the United States of America, that is the best, uh, school board. Performance of any genre. He should win a Grammy. I wish that was a category. That was the most amazing fucking thing I've ever heard in my life. Can you imagine being bored? Um, or here's what I love. I don't know what, what, what the other items on the agenda of this H I S D school board meeting were. But, you know, sometimes they'll throw in like, oh, let's give, um. You know, let, let's, um, let's celebrate the, um, the band director of, uh, Lamar. you know, let, let's, let's celebrate the, the band director of Lamar High School. You know, like for her twenty, so like all the band students come like to like support her and shit to like, yeah, support your teacher. I'm gonna get up and get an award. Like come, come to the school.
Clap, clap, clap.
So, so they're in there and then this fucking maniac gets up to the mic in a fucking wrestling costume. Super slash superhero costume. And like destroys the fucking universe with, that was beautiful.
Dude, he made some pretty bold claims there. A trustee's getting kickbacks from an after, after school program.
Bro. It was like a wrestling promo. It was like the greatest wrestling promo I've ever seen, but it was like in a real, like public forum. Like for real stakes and the shit, he, yeah, he, bro, he was calling out the entire fucking school, the suit. He's like, Mr. Superintendent. And like the way he was speaking was like, oh, well, god damn. Like he performed it like beautifully. I, I just, I've never seen anything that, that made me that excited. Uh, to get involved in local fucking education politics in my life. So you may, just a, just a hint. You may want to follow the, the, you know, the local proceedings of one Houston Independent School District, largest school district in the state of Texas, mind you. Seems like some drama's about to unfold. Some people are gonna go to fucking jail like real soon, according to Mr. Monroe. So, anyway, I just wanted to bring that up because that was one of the most amazing things I've ever witnessed.
And Gary, if you're listening to this, please come on our show. Please.
You are absolutely welcome to come on to the program, the Skip the Noise podcast, whenever you want. Skipthenoisepodcast@gmail.com. Hit me up, please, sir. If anybody knows, I mean, it's a Texas based show. A good majority of our listeners
Exactly.
are in Texas and even specifically pretty heavy in the Harris County area. So if anybody has any connection to this astound, astounding orator, please let us know because we would love to have him on the program, uh, program and tell us all the dirt about H I S D and the inner workings of the fucking school board. You can rant, sir. I, I'll give you about thirty minutes to just go on a complete fucking tirade and just air it all out right here on the Skip the Noise podcast. So if anybody knows Gary Monroe, put him in contact with me. And we'll make that happen. But what'd you, what were your thoughts on that, Rick?
Dude, when I first saw it, I thought it was, I thought it was gonna be like a comedy skit or whatever, which it kind of did have its comedic elements because you see this grown man in a superhero outfit, you know? And then the, you know, the way he's, he's speaking and so forth, that's, it's funny. But the content that he's saying is like, dude, that's such some bold, bold claims. Yeah. You know, if it was a wrestling show, of course it'd be entertaining, but what he was saying was like, man, sounds like he knows some shit, you know, and, and whoever the board member was that was taking kickbacks from an after school program must be shitting their pants right now.
For sure.
And knowing that somebody knows.
And knowing too, if you're coming, if you're listening to this from outside of our universe, the, um, there's been, our mayor Sylvester Turner has been involved in a lot of controversy over, over the years with, with corruption and things like that. At the same time, I still, I always, I officially big about, big up him on the show overall. I'm, I'm just a fan. That's all I can say, but, but I'm not saying he's completely clean. I'm sure there's shit going on. Like when there's smoke, there's fire. There's been a lot. So, hey, whatever. Either way, though, I still support you. Yeah, yeah. But I, I still, it's part of the, I don't know. But anyway, yeah, I just thought that was, especially, you know, I come from, not now, but my, not my current job, but I've worked before in the kind of in the labor movement on the education side. So I've been to a lot of school board meetings for like different districts and supporting different things and so I know like how fucking monotonous and boring and bullshit school board meetings are. That was like part of my world for a while is attending these things for like other, you know. And so to see this, I prayed, like I'd make my own humor out of some of the shit, right? That was going on. You have this real sick kind of humor, but like if that fell into my lap, I would have had the biggest smile on my face the entire time, witnessing that, if I was actually at that meeting and weren't, wasn't expecting that. Holy shit.
You know what though? I know, I, I know why, I, I, now that you talk about that, I know why he may have done that. Gone that way, like just in a suit. Cause whenever you have a regular person talking to the school board, the school boards aren't even making eye contact with you. They're doing their own thing. They're playing solitaire on their computers. You're just speaking for the record and someone's just, you know, documenting what you're saying and no one's listening to you.
Oh, not at all. They're not listening.
They're not listening. They're just looking at their computers.
Oh, they don't give a fuck. You could, you could make the entire audience cry because you told some horrifying story about how their policies were
They don't give a shit.
starving your little Becky in, in second grade and everybody in the room's crying. They're just like, oh, okay, cool. Next, boop. Like next.
Time's up.
He literally could give fuck, a half of a fuck. So, yeah, I didn't, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no. So you're right. And, and I don't think they give a fuck. So you, you have this guy who's shows up in a superhero outfit. You're gonna listen to him, you know, because he's different. And I see his point now. At first I was trying to figure out what he was doing, but I think that was what he was doing. I think he was trying to get the retention.
Oh, big time. And well, not only that, but there's this phenomenon, we were talking kind of pre-show, uh, warmup where you could argue the intent, it was to go viral, right? Cause that, there, it seems to be recently, you know, just stuff that, stuff like not, not, it's not always school board meetings, but stuff like that, right? Like public meetings and you'll see these crazy antics, like there was one, I want to say it was local too. I know it was in Texas. I just can't remember. I don't know if it was in, oh, it was, it was up in Dallas. So Ben,
Oh, really?
Ben gets to take the L for this one, uh, on behalf of his resident here where he's decided to, uh, to settle down. Yeah, where he's been forced to live, taken against his will. Now he's kind of stuck there. We like to jab about him. But anyway, it was up there. So one of the Dallas counties or maybe it was Dallas. I don't know, but some guy, I think he was speaking in front of city council or some shit. You know, middle aged white guy, fucking looks like a, you know, accountant or something up there rap and like played a beat. Like somebody, somebody queued up the fucking music and had an instrumental track from rap over. Yeah, it was, it was like cringe. Like,
Like, like watching a white guy dance kind of thing?
Yeah, it's tough. Like it's, yeah, good, isn't like, hmm, like we're not even getting into quality. Like you're, you're just trying to get past the like,
The cringe?
Well, yeah, like what the fuck am I even watching? But at the same time, it's kind of funny though. But I'll give him that, like it's ballsy and it's, it's funny about how that he like just goes for it.
Yeah.
So part of that is I, I respect it. But it's still cringe as fuck. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Like, I'm kind of like, hey, look at the fucking balls on this guy. Like, he doesn't care. He has no, gives no fucks about what kind of an ass he looks like. You know?
That's cool, man. That's cool. I can, I can respect that.
Right, right. So I respect his commitment to clownhood, in other words. In, in his own, in his own little way, because that's what it is. But anyway, but then you see other ones too. Like there was a guy, the fuck, I think this was several years ago, this guy debated the, about like boneless wings and like the fact that it was, it was a joke. Like in any of the words, like there's a trend of people doing these crazy stunts at like boring ass, you know, publicly, policy holding meetings. But anyway, it's kind of a unique trend, but this guy wins. Like whatever, whatever battle might have existed in the Supreme Titans of, you know, of, of putting in your two cents, school board meetings. Oh, the champion. Like, I don't think anybody could ever top that. So kudos to you, sir. Yeah.
Uh, so Gary, please call us if you're listening or if anybody knows who he is, just haven't.
Drop us a line. Open invitation, Mr. Monroe and good luck on your campaign, sir. And I think with that, you, you think we're about to tie this one up and a good show, sir. Virtual fist bump. You know, first time, episode ninety six, that it's been this combination. Surprisingly, we just discovered that as we were starting. Yeah, as always, the show must go on. So good show, sir. Appreciate it. I know, man. Public, yeah, we really shit on. Yeah, he does. I know. He needs to take a break. This fucking guy. Now he's got some, he's got some business to handle. So he'll be back next week, I assume. I think, right? Because he's got,
Yeah, I think, I think his, whatever he's doing ends this week. So.
Sounds good. So we should have him back next week. So don't fret. But with that, we'll see you guys next week. It's been fun. Have a great week despite the bleak outlook. We, but humorous take on a bleak outlook is what we're here to provide. So, so long, everybody. We'll see you next week. Bye.